Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Three requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to their meetings until the Washington state restrictions are lifted. Beginning Friday, May 21st, 2021, and through today, the Washington Department of Health, Labor and Industries, Governor Anthony's office, and the Benton Franklin Health District have lifted their requirements for face coverings for vaccinated individuals. For many, this marks a turn in the impact of the pandemic on their lives and workplaces. For the city, and specifically the conduct of city council meetings, we will also see some welcoming changes. The city has been relying on prior direction and guidance relating to the requirement of face coverings from the governor's office, State Department of Health, CDC, and the Ben Franklin Health Department. With those authorities now having modified their direction and guidance as it relates to vaccinated individuals, vaccinated council staff and members of the public may attend the council meetings without a face covering. City Hall signage has been modified to reflect that vaccinated individuals are not required to wear a face covering, but that those not vaccinated will need to continue to do so until the order has been lifted by the proper authority. The Agenda Packet is available on the City of Pasco website at www.pascal-wal.gov/Agenda. And then please note that the City Council Workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with housekeeping out of the way, we would like to begin with the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Potem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you. And maybe all rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll go into verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they would like to report from this last week? Councilmember Alvarado.
Oh yeah, just reporting, I attended the Ben Franklin Council Government's meeting, a monthly meeting. And not a ton to report other than they are looking to see how they can apply for some of the funds from some of the earmark funds. And just curious, perhaps a good conversation offline to see if we're taking advantage of any of that from Murray's office as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? And Councilmember Roach, if you have something, please speak up because I've not seen you on the screen.
Hi Mayor, this is Councilmember Roach. Visit Tri-Cities is this upcoming Wednesday, so I don't have a report yet for you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next we'll go to items for discussion. And tonight, first on the agenda was a train safety presentation that, unless I'm not correct, that we're going to postpone that to a later date. So we'll be skipping that one for tonight. Item B, we have the 2020 Fire Department for Performance Report. Chief Gere, would you like to start us off with that?
Actually Deputy Chief Dunbar will be presenting that tonight, who has done a lot of work to get this put together. And you know, as we do more and get more done every year, it seems to get longer. But I'm sure he'll do a good job of trying to move us through this as quick as we can. So Chief Dunbar.
Good evening, Chief Dunbar.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me fine?
We can hear you just fine.
Perfect. Okay. Actually, I'll go ahead and turn my camera on just in case. So you can see I'm sitting here in my office anxiously waiting to do the presentation. As Chief Gere said, we've got a lot of data to go through. I'll try to get through this as quick as I can. Just kind of going through where we at with 2020. So on our first slide, we talk about our strategic plan. In 2019, we updated our strategic plan and actually the council accepted it earlier this year with very good comments and all that aspect of it. And out of that, we've identified several different areas that we're working on and have identified some goals and objectives, including department cohesion, better communication, and enhanced teamwork across the shifts, one of the key issues. Additional community outreach, which lies right within one of the council goals, which we'll talk about on the next slide here in a minute. We want to be able to share some of our traditions with the community, bring the community into their fire department because it is really their fire department. We're just happy to do the work for you guys. Another one was to enhance communications with English as a second language groups. We've got a very diverse city, lots of people that don't communicate, and English is their primary language, so we need to start reaching out to those so we can better serve them and address their needs. Moving on, we have some operational readiness that is always the key aspect of it. And many of these things we'll talk about as we move forward in the performance of them. Response times are always at the top of the list as one of your council goals. Technical competence that we'll talk about in a little bit. Maintaining that WSRB Class III rating that's going to be one of the key elements that comes out of the master plan that we're having worked on right now, which we'll talk about in the next one. We're updating that 2016 master plan because we've accomplished many of the things already in it. So that will address a lot of the operational readiness. And of course, that leads into professional development. We want to be able to deliver those services at a high level and demonstrate that we are a professional organization. Part of that includes succession planning, working with HR and to improve the employee evaluation process with the newly hired Deputy Chief Reed. He's actually working with the operations to work on veteran, the evaluation processes moving forward. And our continuing education of officers, as you know, the fire service, it's not just go run and throw some water on some stuff. There's a whole bunch of other aspects to it. So all the different aspects of trying to keep the organization moving forward is key. So on our next slide, we talk a little bit about the council goals that line right in with our strategic plan. As part of the strategic plan, we actually went through, and as well as the budget process this year, we went through the council goals and identified several of them that the fire department actually aligns with and performs against and maintains and works on. You wouldn't think that the fire department would have that many council goals underneath what it's responsible for, but we are truly serving the community. So quality of life, of course, we're going to deliver our services efficiently and effectively. That goes right towards being proficient and technically savvy in our careers and delivering that service. Financial stability is a big one, especially as we move forward with the growth. Always looking at ways to manage the costs of our service delivery. And then we just got done with some management team training for a couple of us that instill that and promote that customer service culture because that's what our business is all about, is delivering the fire and EMS and other service to all of the citizens that come through our city. Community safety obviously is the big one that we know falls underneath us. Maintain that WSRB rating, achieve our target fire response times. That's one of the key reasons we do this presentation by RCW. We're supposed to monitor that and hit our goals. And then working and leveraging to expand our partnerships to assist the community members that might be in crisis. I'll talk a little bit about our PRN program later in the presentation about how we're doing that. And last, we talked about it a little bit with the strategic plan is getting out there and doing that community engagement. We serve the community. We are part of the community. We want to share our traditions and those things with the community and truly be part of Pasco's community. So our mission statement is there honorably protect and serve our community, which is right in line with those council goals. So the next slide, we've got our pillars of excellence that are basically what we base our performance on. And of those five pillars that we kind of hold the roof up on, they're based, and we looked at that on our several different documents, master and strategic plans that we look and identify out years and immediate future needs, what we need to put together that is tied right back into that WSRB rating. And maintaining that level that we were able to achieve is key, especially as we go moving forward with the city. And all that is tied back with the city council goals. I think if you've seen over the last couple of slides, you've seen how we've tied all of those together to build on the pillars of excellence. So we're going to walk through each one of the pillars very briefly tonight, starting with the operational readiness. And on the next slide, we talk about our technical competence. This is going back to some of the training pieces. IFSAAC is what the state uses to certify our firefighters. And over the last couple of years, we've put a very high emphasis on this. And we've been able to achieve almost 100% of our firefighters being firefighter one. We've got a couple of stragglers that we're working on, firefighter two, we're just a couple out. Fire officer training is actually our certification took a big jump this year. So 48% of our personnel, almost half of our line firefighters are certified fire officer one level. So that means that they understand what their bosses' jobs are. So we all work together a little bit better as a team. So this is one of those key things that we'll talk about here in just a minute. Maintaining that technical competence through certification plays large part in the training hours and the WSRB requirements. So on the next slide, we talk about those training hours. And you can see that this year, we're a little off on our training hours. Why? Well, COVID. We couldn't get our stations together and do our multiple company operations because of the limitations. And so we dropped our hours a little bit compared to last year. Still, we were able to maintain our company level officer training or our company level training because we wore the proper PPE and took care of those things. We're still above our target per hour, hours of training, which we shoot for that 200 hours. And again, we were able to achieve that this year again, even without the specialty team training or we tried to get cross shift training and all those kinds of things taken care of. Hopefully next year or after, actually the rest of this year, now that we've had some restrictions lifted, we'll get back on the specialty team training hours. We've already seen it where we've actually been able to meet together as a larger group, which is how we operate on fire scenes. So it's very key to do things on the training ground as well as what we do on the fire ground. The technical competence on the earlier page, it allows us to have this low level, or low level, but the 200 hours per employee. Normally, it would be 240 hours per employee per year, which doesn't sound like a whole lot. But by having everybody certified at the firefighter two level, we actually cut that in half. So we can concentrate on, instead of just the basics, get together more and concentrate on becoming even more proficient at our job. So we're working on that high level training out still. Moving on to the next slide, we've got our operational readiness, which we talk about, unit hour utilization. So what this chart identifies is basically how much of the day or how much of the shift a unit is busy on calls. This doesn't include training, which you saw they're doing 200 hours of training a year. Now we're talking about just the time spent on incidents. None of our apparatus at this point in time go over the 12% limit. And when we added Station 84 three years ago, we actually dropped one of them down from about 15% down to 12%, a little bit less than 12%. So Station 3, Medic 2823 there at the far right, it's still maintaining very busy, even at 12%. It's our busiest station right now. And you can see the trend is increasing as we continue to grow. So with the increasing call volume, we're just seeing additional time being spent on responses to our citizens' needs. So one of the key things is we did implement shared crew between the ladder 2811 and Rescue 2832, which are the two in the middle. So those kind of get combined. So even though they look small, that's really one crew that's operating as the apparatus that's needed depending upon the type of call. So we're kind of looking at some of these where we need to adjust how we look at them and stack some charts. So one of the things with this, there's trigger levels. Once we reach a certain percentage of what we call UHU, unit hour utilization, then we would either add staff or add stations, those kinds of things. So this, in addition to one of the other charts, I'll show you here in just a little bit, of concurrent calls, calls that are occurring at the same time, in addition to how busy they are, are some of the key metrics we need to pay attention to, to adjust staffing, response plans, those kinds of things. But right now, we're doing pretty well in this, but we are monitoring that trend as we continue to get busier and busier. The next slide shows our incidents by category. So you would think that since we're a fire department, we have a lot of fires. Well, we really don't. There's only 4% of our fires, or 4% of our incidents that were actually fire calls. A bulk of what we do is the EMS, which straight regular EMS is 70%. Most departments are running 75 to 80%, while the other 8% are tied up in those good intent calls, the false alarm and the service calls. With some of the things we're doing with the PRN program, we're categorizing calls a little bit differently. And we're doing a little bit better job of data entry on this. So that's why our EMS responses appear to be down. But when we actually group them by further breakdown, we're at about 70, 79% EMS type calls coming right out of 911. So we're staying right with the national average. One of the things that we've been able to do, I mentioned PRN, we'll talk about it a little bit more, is address some of the 911 calls that are the non-emergency high utilizers where a single individual may have many, many, many calls that it's not really the proper use for 911. And by diverting resources to that versus a true emergency, we're just trying to manage that. If we can reduce those by through the PRN, then that keeps the other units available for those higher risk, higher acuity calls. So the use of the PRN program that we've got has actually helped tremendously with that. And like I said, I'll talk about that specifically. But implementing that PRN program has already shown a reduction in the number of 911 calls for some of our high utilizers, thereby keeping some of our other units in service for those other calls. On the next slide, we've got our traditional heat map, a little bit different. You know, I couldn't disappoint and not have at least one heat map. So this shows kind of where the incidents were in the location. You can see there's kind of two groupings in east of 395, west of Oregon, south of the interstate, and then northwest, all north of Interstate 182, which is one of the driving reasons for moving Station 83 north of Interstate 82. Although it didn't happen in 2020, we actually moved into Station 83 on January 18th. It'll be interesting to see what we do for response times on the north side in 2021. So the darker, bigger circles are just areas where we have higher call volume. The one right down there, just above the cable bridge is downtown Sacagawea, that area. And then our two big retirement homes are driving the other two ones just south of the airport there. That's again, one of the high areas. And then Road 68, of course, drives quite a bit as well. So comparing that heat map onto the next slide, which is right from our dispatch agency, each one of those black dots, and it's probably a little hard to see, but each one of those black dots represents a single call. You can see it kind of matches where things are at. We don't have a whole bunch of stuff all in one location, but you can definitely see different areas that are a little darkened out because of the number of calls. And then each one of the colors represents a first due station area. So again, just a different representation that we get right out of our CAD data from our dispatch center. So we'll be looking at this as we move forward to see, do some analysis and adjust response zones and where stations go. On the next slide, we talk about some overlapping incidents. One of the things that we talked about was looking at our incidents per capita. So on the left hand of the chart, you can see that we broke down the incidents per thousand residents versus the population or, yeah, the different rate than the overlapping incidents. So basically, we're showing a lot of incidents increasing, but there's not really a good trend where you can see, because between 2016 and 17, the blue line went up significantly, whereas the incidents really didn't. And then a flat line kind of goes, and then we kind of catch up to each other there at the end. So that'll be an interesting one to see what happens, especially as we increase the trends. So overlapping incidents, that's when we've got calls that are busy and then a station has another call in its area, bringing the second due station, which increases the response times. So that's one of the things we need to pay attention to. As you can see, we had a pretty good increase between 19 and 20 of those overlapping calls. That just means that we're getting busier and busier, which does relate to an increase in our response time that I'll show you on a chart a little bit later. So with this one, like I said, tying this concurrent calls back to the unit utilization is one of the trigger points we have for when we need to look at staffing options, what we need to do different peak load, peak demand units, some of those kinds of things. And some of those things will be discussed in the master plan that we're having developed right now. Talked about total response times, that's on the next slide where it's got the 90th percentile response time for 2020. We actually went up a little bit over 2019 by about 12 seconds. Again, and a lot of that has to do with those overlapping calls. We're having second due units go into other stations area, which we're a geographically spread out department and area, so it takes just a little bit longer. The good thing is the overall trend since 2017 is we're decreasing. We're getting closer to that target of 480 seconds, which comes right out of National Fire Protection Agency 1710, which is our performance standards for career fire departments. So that's still our target is to get down to that 480. Just takes a little bit of resources, which means more money and those kinds of things. So we're always trying to manage that. So, but we are headed in the right direction, even though we took a little bit of a bump up. And we'll see what that does with the Station 83 move and then some adjustments when we move Station 84 here later this summer. Going on to the next pillar, we've got some EMS information. Pasco's, if you're going to have a heart attack, this is a good place to do it because we, for the last two years, our survival rates for sudden cardiac arrest are above the national average. And that equates back to all those training hours and technical proficiency and delivering that effective service and the good response times, as well as having a strong community risk reduction program, getting the hands only CPR training out. It's all a community effort to have that high of a, what we call an Eutstein etiology survival rate, that it's a very, very detailed metric that we calculate. Very few of them actually meet, but the ones that we do were at 60%, which is pretty good. We were at just below 60% last year, which was both years above the national average. So if you're going to have an EMS event, might as well do it in Pasco where we can take care of you. So, and there's tons of other EMS information that was in the printed report. Not going to go into it because we could spend about three hours going through all the different things. And it's better for you to read it than me standing here and tell you about it. Moving on to the PRN program, which is the next slide, which is one of the things that we really started in 2018 for about the last quarter. And then 2019, we had a part-time, and then we moved into our full-time this year. 2019, we had 58 referrals. That was 58 individuals that needed extra help and tried to get some resources too, so they would stop calling 911 for routine medical or mental health issues, those kinds of things. Of those 58 referrals, 11 of them were active at the end of the year, 27 were closed, 18 were disqualified. And sometimes they get disqualified because their contact information just goes away and we're unable to contact them after we've made that initial contact. Or they've moved cities and it's not that they're no longer our problem, but we're going to concentrate on our residents and work on those issues. Some of them are just hard to contact or they refuse help and they don't want anything to do with us. It's a great partnership with Consistent Care that we've got that runs this program. Heather McCollum is an awesome person. She does stuff that I could never do, and without her, that program would not be as successful as it is. This year, we were able to get a grant through Consistent Care to add another person. So instead of one person, we'll have two here shortly later this summer. And all of this is in an effort to decrease the 911 calls and get those people the help that they need through avenues that you wouldn't traditionally think of. We've had many, many, many success stories. One patient out on the west end was calling 911 literally one to two times a day for about three months. As soon as Heather got involved, no more 911 calls. And that went on for several months. So just by addressing that, so we've had success in this program. And we're just going to continue to grow this because that's where we're kind of leaning in the future. So that's a big, big piece of what we're doing, and that seems to be the growing trend. Moving on, we've got some fire response details in the next slide. We still do go to fires occasionally, which is why a lot of us got into the whole business, you know, lights, sirens, fires, all that stuff. We did have a reduction in our false alarms between 2019 and 2020 in our, in our single-family houses, even though everybody was at home on lockdown, probably because they noticed it and called Ben. And we went out and using COVID protocols, helped them with their smoke alarms and got batteries changed and all those kinds of things. So, but even then, we still did have several fires. We had a small uptick in our structure fires from 27 to 31. Cooking fires went up by just a little bit. Again, with everybody being at home and cooking and a lot of people maybe not being comfortable or trying new things, I'm surprised that didn't happen even more. So in our multiple family or apartment complexes, that's the part on the right. We did have some increases in false alarm, but not by a whole lot. We've been working very diligently with Troy Hendren on managing those false alarms. So even with, again, with everybody being home in 2020, it wasn't too bad. So overall, not a bad thing. We still do manage those. And cooking fires is still one of the biggest causes of fires in the home. And we've got some CRR efforts that Ben Shearer has been working on, including a demonstration trailer that we can now go out and do some demonstrations about proper cooking techniques and how to manage them along that line. Speaking of Ben, his profile or his activities are on the next slide, community risk reduction. We weren't able to get out in the community this year. It's just a simple fact with everything being what it was. Our events were significantly off for this year. But if you notice, our smoke alarms installed and serviced really weren't that far off from last year. We maintained a lot of them, and that goes right to Ben's willingness to go out and do things. The crews are getting more involved with taking the right precautions. We can still get out there and take care of that. So even though we didn't have our normal public events, we were still out taking care of what we needed to, and it allowed us to do it. On the next slide, it's got some of the outreach programs that were there. And you can see that we kind of went from being out doing things to more of a public safety or public service announcements, and then a little bit of the smoke alarm. So those made up the 75 of public events we were able to do. And again, we adapted. Ben did a great job. He worked very hard on maintaining, keeping community risk reduction out there in the community, especially as everybody was home paying attention to things. There's lots of opportunities for things to go bad when everybody's at home. And our community risk reduction played, I'd like to think it played a good role in keeping our responses down in there. The last things we've got, and actually the last thing we've got is our public satisfaction. This came right out of the strategic plan that you guys saw. Basically, looking at it. Basically, looking at it, the the public seems to be pretty happy with us. The appropriately staffed, we respond appropriately seventy five percent of the time. The funding, they agree that we're appropriately funded. There's even some that say we're underfunded, although I don't ask any of the other departments about that within the city. They would argue differently. But we, that's one of the things with the strategic plan is keeping that public satisfaction at that high level because without them, we wouldn't be here and we are here for them. So with that, that ends our brief report and presentation. If you have any questions, either I or Chief Gere would be happy to answer if we can.
Mr. Chief Dunbar, thank you for that report. We got the book that was sent to our homes and everybody's looking at it. I left mine on my kitchen table because that's where I was feeding it last. But so much information that comes in that report. Very proud of our fire department and I just hope that this report, I mean, there's so much uses that you could have with this and and trying to improve our systems even more than what you guys have already done today. Very proud of you guys. Any other comments from the council?
Just a brief one and a quick question. I was able to spend some time with Chief Gere some months ago and just to really see the difference that strategic planning has made for the organization. It really shows. And so I just wanted to give kudos about that. I did have a question about the way that data is reported. And just just curious, out of curiosity, how how do we manage for outlier information like that one person that but I guess that probably would be a really good example, that one person that had multiple calls a day, or perhaps if there's a major fire event and it really impacts the the response time for perhaps for another emergency. Do we have kind of a way that in which we do our statistics that really shows that?
Yeah, actually, one of the ways that gets reported is we use the what's called the ninetieth percentile. So we're actually, instead of reporting on each and every event, you can have that outlier that it took us thirty minutes to drive from one end of the town to the other, just because we were busy on a large incident. Or it takes that long for another unit to come in. So we kind of throw that out and look at it at the ninetieth percentile. So we're always looking at that. Where are we at ninety percent of the time, which is what that that response time goal is based on. So that does take into account that statistical anomaly or for those incidents that we just can't quite get there.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Maloney, oh, and and then we'll go here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. As as always, lots of really good information here and really appreciate the 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 full packet as well as the presentation tonight, kind of summarizing it. So I just want to comment on the 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 PRN program, the Pasco Resource Navigator. If I understood you correctly, you said that we we were able to add an additional PRN this year. Is that, did I get that correctly?
So this year, twenty twenty one, we have it funded for a full F T E. In twenty twenty, we had a half F T E. So and then through G cash, the Greater Columbia Accountability whatever that stands for, I can never remember it. There was a grant opportunity for some intern funding and working with consistent care. The city obviously couldn't apply for it, but working with consistent care who we have the contract for, they were actually awarded fifty thousand dollar grant to hire an intern. And then we'll be working with them to actually, so we'll have two people towards the end of the year working in the PRN program.
Great. And I'm with that, actually, the it's an eighteen month intern program and consistent care quoted us a cost to to provide that intern as the second person at ninety thousand dollars and the grant was for fifty, but the A A R P, I I get mixed up, not A A R P because that's where I fit in, but the ARPA funding will make up the other forty percent because community health workers are specifically included in that ARPA funding. So that'll be a no cost to get that second person into a community health worker program with Pasco Fire.
That's great news. Yeah, I'm I'm very supportive of this program. Everything I've heard about it and how it's affecting it. When you look at how it specifically deals with the the highest users of our services and how that impacts us, you know, obviously anyway, we can, we can reduce those those kind of chronic issues that people have in the community to help them get their resources. That's that's deeply important. So really excited to hear that we we were getting, we're able to, you know, really ramp up that resource. And I'll be very interested over the next, of course, the next, you know, year to find out how well that's working for us. And are we hitting the sweet spot or is there still more need? So I know that that's, it's it's just simply hard for people who are in you know, in the best of condition to be able to get all the resources they need and identify how to navigate, you know, all the different healthcare and other systems. And it's even obviously much more difficult for someone who is in crisis to be able to navigate those. So someone so having this, these sort of roles do just seem absolutely essential. So anyways, very supportive, glad to hear it. I'm glad to see how how broadly effective it's been and and the positive experiences and looking here, looking forward to hearing even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Toronto.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deputy Chief. Just a quick question. I'm looking at page twenty and twenty one. And and this is one I think we've discussed before. It's it's the age group and and recognizing myself as one who identifies as forty plus without full disclosure and seeing that my body's slowly breaking down. Do you, do you foresee age, obviously only seventy or only twenty two percent are eligible for retirement, but do you foresee an age or a need to to kind of recruit younger class? If so, are we finding technical programs to recruit out of?
Yeah, actually, one of the things that I sit on as part of my job is the TRITech and CBC Advisory Committee. And what we're trying to do with that whole program is hook the kids that are interested in high school in their junior and senior year, get them hooked up with a local fire district to get them to be a resident, work through CBC to get their fire science and get that, get some of the certifications early and then work with other local departments because the, all the departments around here do similar training. So we build those relationships. So not only do we get younger, right out of high school, college age kids, we also build those relationships and can kind of see how well they work and which agency they fit with best and their local kids. So that they're coming back and being part of their community for their career. So that is one of the things that we're working on, as well as there's a group that have done some recruiting videos and hosted online events, seeking out individuals and explaining to them what Pasco Fire has to offer for them, what the opportunities are and and those kind of things, so we can address those right up front. So yeah, we're we're actively marketing ourselves to get the best and the brightest and sometimes the youngest to come and join our aging workforce here.
And I'd make a little follow up comment. You know, we've, we've grown a lot, especially in the last six, seven years Pasco Fire has. And but I've really tried to do as we decide who we make offers to is get a good blend of people that are a little bit older and have some experience and then some younger kids and not just focus on hiring younger people because we could get a real divergence in that that middle age group. And and we need a little bit, we need that maturity, we need that job and life experience in the middle to kind of temper the young kids, but we need both of them. So we we make a real conscious effort on how we spread that age group out. And and I think we really need to to do a good job of staying people in the twenty five to thirty five, forty years old range. You know, you get over fifty years old and you're still riding an engine or a ladder truck, it gets pretty tough. Pulling hose at two in the morning across wherever it is. So we try and look at that whole diversity and we've got a really good spread if you look at that chart right now in terms of age groups.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Toronto. Mayor Protem Braz.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually, you answered my question, Deputy Chief Dunbar. Just really to piggyback on the comments from Councilmember Maloney in regards to kudos to the program. Having worked with consistent care and alongside with Ben Shear and now Heather, the services that you are offering to the community are essential in reduction of the calls, unnecessary calls. And so it's just that education piece of it is just really necessary. So thank you again for the presentation and thank you for all your services.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Braz, the Councilmember Milney.
Thank you, Mayor, and this isn't so much of a question, just a comment that I loved the reports. I thought whoever did this did a phenomenal job with all the graphics and then how it was worded was actually quite intriguing to read. Usually sometimes you kind of get bogged down when you're reading one just page after page, but this was actually really, really well put together and times that I had questions, it seemed like I just turned the page and there was the graph and the the whole answer. So I was just really this is one of the best reports I've written, read in quite a long time. So I just wanted to say in my book, this was really well done and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milney. And again, thank you, Deputy Chief Dunbar and Chief Gere for this report and hopefully it can continue to to just improve on what we have here. And also want to just congratulate those, well, in Precity Herald, we even have folks that did a rescue, if I'm not mistaken, over at the Palouse Falls area. So we have people going everywhere and and not only serving our community, but others as well. So I appreciate it very much and thank you for this report and we'll be looking forward to, this will be coming to as an item next week. Is that correct to approve? Or is this? Chief Gere?
This one, but typically council, just by considering agenda adopts the twenty twenty performance report.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for that. All right, then we'll move on. And thank you once again. We'll move on to the next item, which is the ordinance in the to the completion of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand thirty eight Pasco Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. Director Rick White, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. Thank you and thank you, Council. This item comes before council because the city staff has completed its effort to update the comprehensive plan and the development regulations per the Washington State Growth Management Act. Our staff has worked extensively with both State Department of Commerce and our our own legal staff to bring this issue before council tonight. And as you can tell by the agenda report, there's considerable background and detailed information that's available for how this issue got to where it is right now today. Just, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, back in October of twenty twenty, City Council adopted two resolutions, thirty nine ninety seven and thirty nine ninety eight, adopting the preferred urban growth boundary alternative, alternative number three and volumes, both volumes one and volume two of the comprehensive plan. However, the, this issue, this item has been unexpectedly delayed at the county level for a number of reasons. However, again, working with the Department of Commerce at Washington State, they have suggested an optional path because a number of communities have found themselves in this same situation. And they have recommended that those items not under direct county approval, which in this case is our entire comprehensive plan minus the urban growth area expansion be adopted prior to the county checking off the box, so to speak, on conformance with the countywide planning policies. Now, what this does is allows about, well, a handful, roughly six pending land use opportunities to move forward addressing critical housing shortage needs within the community. Again, it does not apply to any properties outside our existing urban growth area, but it does apply to the Broadmoor area, for example, the Port of Pasco's Osprey Point, for example, and three or four infill development projects that are in the queue awaiting for rezon requests. In addition, the city, of course, has about thirty one million dollars in Department of Ecology funded loans for improvements to our process water reuse facility and our municipal wastewater treatment plant. And if councils should choose to adopt our comprehensive plan, again, excluding our urban growth area expansion, this would complete the city staff's effort and bring us into compliance with the Growth Management Act without having to wait for any twists or wrinkles that might occur if we otherwise would have to wade through the county process. By the way, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners will consider the urban growth area expansion request next Tuesday night, June first, at a public hearing at the Happo Center. I can't guarantee that they'll make a decision that night. That would be wonderful if they did, but my, my, my feeling is is that it will continue possibly one or maybe two weeks into June. However, again, the 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 action requested of council tonight kind of separates that process from the one that's critical to our comprehensive plan and certainly I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have of of this approach.
Thank you, Director White, for that insight. Any questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. White, I I guess my my only very brief statement would be I I support this completely. We need to move forward. We need to get these regulations in place for what's there existing. I hope the county is able to move forward quickly now at this point, but until then, we need this. So I'm I'm all in. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else? I'll be honest, you know, the four hundred and sixty seven pages that were part of this package, you know, as you're, as you're perusing through this. You know, a lot of it is is necessary and things we have to do. And I know a lot of work went into this, so so I'll be approving this as well. So any other comments from council? If not, thank you. We'll consider it.
Is there public comment available at this meeting?
No, there, there's, there's not, there's not at the workshop. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Yeah, I think the public comment comes in next week if when we go to to put it on the agenda. Thank you. Yes, yes, I believe we don't have a meeting next Monday. Do we have a meeting next Tuesday, Mr. Zabel? City Manager Zabel?
Tune seven.
Tune seven. All right, thank you. All right, next we'll go to, thank you for that, Director White. And then next we'll go to the American Rescue Plan Act and we'll start that off, City Manager Dave Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I wanted to just kick it off and then Director Sigdel and Deputy City Manager Lincoln are going to assist. So wanted to get back to you as we discussed last week regarding the development of a plan for for allocation of approximately seventeen, a little less than seventeen and a half million dollars through the American Rescue Plan. As council is aware, the act itself provides over three hundred fifty billion dollars to states, counties, travel governments. And the city's act allocation was at that about seventeen and a half million dollar mark. When I reported to you last, we were waiting on Department of Treasury guidance that's since been released on May tenth and we've been in the process of evaluating that and actually continue to still evaluate that as as well as collecting other data. Council last week authorized staff to make the request for distribution of the eight, first eighteen point seven million dollars of those funds, which we expect sometime this week or early next week with the remaining allocation equal amount to be received later in the year. And then another note, it is in your general report as well. I I think this is helpful in the timing. We, the city is authorized until December thirty first, twenty twenty four to you to spend those funds, at which any unspent funds at that time would be returned to the return to the Treasury. So, you know, as we kind of walk through this and I and I mentioned a little bit last week with with the guidance now in hand, times for developing a a plan for allocation of the funds is upon us. Staff's in the process of not only reviewing that guidance, you know, and I I think it's really important that we understand where those dollars can be spent because if we start talking about projects that can't, that don't qualify, we create expectations out in the community that can't be met. So that's, you know, it may, it may seem a bit, you know, maybe staff being a little bit, bit of a stickler in in not getting too far ahead of this, but we really are, you know, wanting to be careful of the messaging we put out there and make sure that what we tell the public are things we can deliver on. The other thing we've been doing too is talking to our other partners out in the Uh, the other thing we're, we've been doing too is talking to our other uh partners out in the community. About what their programs are gonna be so we can kind of avoid some duplication and then trying to also do an inventory of. Of what has been done and that, that's been, that was provided, uh, what we know of right now at least for, uh, uh, from our. Local agency, uh, partners in the region, uh, was provided as a, an attachment to your uh agenda report. So with that, I'm gonna turn it a little bit, uh, turn it over to uh Director Sigdel for a while, she's gonna kind of walk through a bit of. Uh, what some of those allowable uses are, what the regulations are telling us, and then we're gonna, we're gonna chat a little bit more on. Uh, council's thoughts on a process uh for public input and uh how we, how we sort of structure this opportunity for the public, so. Uh, with that, Director Sigdel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Zabel, evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, as you've been hearing about this for the last two months, we're finally at a stage where we're expecting. Uh, funding from Treasury, half of our seventeen point four million dollars in allocation in the next couple of days. Uh, you passed the resolution last week that allowed me to request that funding uh from the department. And um, at this point, we've gone through our uh, what is called an interim final rule. And though it is final in the title, the way that it is written, uh, definitely poses. Um, literally and figuratively questions uh, uh, within the document itself. That is asking for public input as well, um, so we do anticipate some of the rules that have been giving to, given to us. At this point, either change or uh be clarified that uh changes um. Uh, the way that we can utilize the funding, and I say that just to kind of let you know that uh we might come back to you later and. Um, and give you a different um, or a more updated um, uh, change uh to the, to the rule overall. Uh, overall, um, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, there will be at least a hundred million, if not more. That will be coming into different jurisdictions within the Franklin County. Um, and uh, one of the concerns, uh, though it's a really a positive concern. To have is duplication of efforts um throughout the different agencies, uh, and sometimes that does have a. Effect of confusing our residents when it comes to um knowing which uh, which agency to go for help and things like that. So we'll have to do a good job at making sure that we are good at communicating with our residents and connecting them to the resources. That are available to them, and thankfully, that is uh one of the resources that is eligible. Uh, uh, within the ARPA funding, which is called Public Benefits Navigators. ARPA funding is very similar to CARES and uh with a few but important differences. And um, overall, business assistance for uh COVID-related uh impacts are high up on the list. Um, with that, household assistance for mortgage rental utility assistance, expansion of childcare. Um, education for um, not just uh students and children, but uh also our um. Um, our businesses, um, the uh trade schools, investments in trade schools, um, things like that. That can get our residents out um and better their lives, um, if it has been impacted by COVID pandemic. Uh, overall, um, you're also um allowed to invest in affordable housing if they fall within. A certain census tract, uh, we are looking for some clarification in that area as well. Um, there's also uh specific assistance to travel tourism and hospitality industry that is specifically called out. And um, also, if I've not already mentioned, behavioral health. Um, and um, some of the things that our uh police and fire departments already do, uh, that can be. Um, utilized as a, as a replacement funding for, for that, like, for example, we already talked with our fire department. About uh consistent care and, and hiring um. The navigator, uh, which we've been doing as an agency for some time. Um, and those types of expenses are eligible, eligible within ARPA. Um, similarly, uh, we have currently um grant uh within, with Lord's Health. Uh, and uh, our police department has come to council and um. Discussed the fact that the grant will be expiring uh in the middle of next year. Um, funding um those kinds of mental health professionals to work with our police department. Um, is um one of the usages that are definitely allowed, so overall, uh, it is. It reads as a fairly open um guidance, um, however, uh. It, it's a little bit conflicting in some places and we're awaiting more webinars and more uh. More guidance from the Treasury Department to ensure that we're reading it. Um, and our hope, reading it correctly, and that our hope is that the intent of the law itself. Um, is what the guidance will contain, uh, there are some places where it doesn't and that is, that is what, what is confusing about it. We were hoping for a little bit more open uh usage of um funding for our infrastructure. However, um, at this point, as we read it, uh, it looks that um, the infrastructure. Projects that would be eligible within this act would be a fairly small. Set of projects that we have in our capital improvement program. Um, these are usually projects that are related to safe drinking water. And there are already set guidelines that the Treasury Department is referring to. Um, and um, we are, we've been working with our Public Works Department to identify some of those projects that you saw. On the list as some of the internal projects that would qualify um for um, for usage of ARPA funds. With that, do you have any questions? I've been. Talking for quite some time and it's the land that I've been living in in the last couple of weeks.
All right, well, thank you, Director Sigdel, any, any questions or comments from council? Well, uh, Councilmember Toronto?
I just have a quick question, I know you've mentioned, uh, and thanks for, thank you for talking a lot, um, that helps slate things out. Uh, you mentioned working uh in coordination with Franklin County to ensure we don't avoid duplication, I appreciate that thought. Um, but you also have on page seven of our packet qualified internal projects, is that. Comprehensive or is that just a list of kind of um. What, based on input or staff's kind of first cut, seem to be readily available? Uh, do we need to expand that? If so, you know, do we have other qualifying projects?
Uh, at this point, I would say it's a first cut, uh, we did work with all of our departments, um, so they could provide us with all of the. Uh, all of their ideas and uh we looked through that, those ideas list, compared it to. Uh, the guidance and made a determination on whether they would be eligible or not. Uh, I have no doubt that there will be uh new projects and uh new ideas that could be added to that list.
Yeah, if, if I could jump in, uh, yeah, as, as Director Sigdel said, this, this is actually, this is a pared down list of. What we see as eligible projects, the, the original list was far more creative and innovative from staff, trust me. But uh, you know, the, as Rich had said, the uh, the requirements of the act. Uh, much more restrictive than, than what you might think. Uh, when it comes to infrastructure, there's actually gonna be an infrastructure bill that comes later, hopefully, that's under negotiation now that uh. You know, there's some opportunities there as well as, as well, other opportunities we're pursuing through earmarks and, and so forth, but uh. I did wanna just have, have a little bit of a discussion and I wanna ask Deputy City Manager to talk a little bit about. Uh, some of the discussions we're having internally, uh, we did have one later this afternoon. Uh, uh, when a few of the council were in on another uh topic, uh, to discuss some downtown issues. And uh, what efforts we're doing to try to really get a handle and learn. Uh, what kind of flexibility we might have under the ARPA regulations.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, um, yeah, earlier today, we, we had a, a really great talk, staff and Councilmember Maloney, actually. Just about some of those what-if scenarios for, for how this, um, how this funding might work, what, what are some things that might be. Um, items that we could consider and what are some things that we, we might not may, be able to consider under the, the guidelines and it's a. You know, as, as we were talking about, it's a hundred and fifty-one page document just for the guidelines, so it is, it's pretty extensive. Um, but one of the things that was really helpful was to kind of go through that list with, with Councilmember Maloney and have an idea of. Some of the items that he thought might, might be of, of use, especially as we're talking about having a, a separate session to really go through those items that. That you all might uh wanna see as, as items that get funded from, from these resources, uh, we did that exercise internally with, with staff. Um, it was a, a, you know, pretty easy exercise just to kind of throw them, some, some, some items out there and then, and meet with uh. Uh, Director Sigdel and kind of talk about her, um, her methodology and her thoughts on what's eligible and what's not, so. It would be probably helpful ahead of our, our meeting as we set a time to get those, uh, those ideas from you all emailed to us. Um, otherwise, I would see us going around the table and spending an awful lot of time kind of. Um, delving in item by item through a, a really extensive list, we can kind of compile that list and send it out to all of you ahead of that meeting. So that you're kind of all on the same page ahe- ahead of that discussion, just to kind of make things a little more um, time effective, I think, as we, as we have that discussion. I imagine there's a lot of, of items that we, we could consider, and then that way staff can kind of cull through and have, have an idea of if there are items that we. Absolutely, that's, that's something you all can consider as you're, as you're deliberating or, or no, I'm sorry, that's not an item that would qualify in our eyes. It was a really useful conversation because there's a lot of gray area, I would say, in interpreting the guidelines, it's not, it's not extremely black and white. Um, but it was helpful to have that dialogue back and forth and say, well, this is how I would interpret it or, or how you would interpret it, so. That would be my suggestion as we're setting a date that you all come up with your, your list of ideas, submit them all through um, the City Manager's office and. We can compile it and send it out to you so you have the comprehensive list that we can have a, a more full conversation at that time.
I, I think the clearest direction we've got uh can be encapsulated by um. Uh, congressional staff member that was assuring us that you'd be able to spend it on a water line or a sewer line. Uh, and that while you can't spend it on roads, you would be able to patch the road where you put the utility in. So that, they made it pretty clear it wasn't for transportation.
Oh, just, just one follow-up thought, um, to the extent that uh we may have projects that could overlap into the county, please get a list. From the county or, um, obviously, we're not talking transportation infrastructure, so something tri-cities-wide might not fly. But in the event there's any way to kind of utilize the funds collectively to knock out, you know, a home run of a project. That we might not be able to fund otherwise without increasing revenue, or I'm sorry, increasing fees or taxes, let's, let's consider that if possible. So that's just kind of my one thought.
Thank you, Councilmember Toronto, and thank you to those council members who had that meeting. Uh, as you guys can see, they put in a lot of extra time for these type of things and it's very important that we take advantage of these opportunities for, for our. Community members and our businesses, so thank you for that, council members. Any other comments or questions on this topic, uh, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, Mr. Zabel, I think I heard you say, um, asking a little bit about what would you, what would we like our process to be going forward? And I certainly um appreciate um Mr. Lincoln's um comments about, you know, of course, you know, if we can gather a feedback and then hold a workshop, that thing, that's. That's probably the, the next steps as I see it and then, um. And then perhaps, um, we can move forward quickly on items that are um, high impact, low risk. Regulatory compliance risk, um, there might be some of those activities that we could authorize quickly and then have a longer community conversation in kind of some categories that council can set. So that we're, we're not just helping the, the Florida, anyone who wants to ask for something, because these rules do not allow us to just fund anybody's ask, so my concern is. If we, if we just have an open call without some pretty clear guidance to the community that we may get some um. Um, ex- expectations that aren't going to, we can't possibly meet, so that is, is my, my additional thought on the next steps is, you know. Get our thoughts together, categorize what, what our priorities are and then put out to community what those categories so that people can uh provide us feedback within, within a framework.
I think that's a great suggestion, I, I, I think it also, I, I, you know, we, we have been talking initially or internally at staff level too. Recognizing that we're probably gonna need a, is, we're probably talking about numerous, numerous pha- phases as we go through this. Because at some point in time, you start to run up on the deadline and depending on how much of these dollars we're able to allocate out. Yeah, I'll just say that um Pasco taxpayers will be paying on the seventeen point six million dollars forever, so they might as well spend it. Rather than send it back, because they're gonna pay the same amount of taxes if they send it back, so. We'll want, we'll wanna utilize it and we'll wanna have some backup projects we can quickly put it into if we. But I, I think that's a great idea, your suggestion, so. We, my thinking is uh, probably maybe they, give you a week or so to get your ideas in, we have a three-day weekend coming up, difficult to schedule a. Workshop around that and we'll, we'll push for something uh la- latter part of the week after Memorial Day or the early part of the week after that, so. And it, it could be an evening, I, I just think we probably need a two, three hours tops, so.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager Zabel, and thank you, Councilmember Maloney. All right, then we're gonna move on, uh, looking forward to getting that done, then we'll move on to the next item. We have a PMC Title Twenty-five Amendment for Mini Storagees in C-one, CR zoning districts, Director Rick White. Would you like to lead us off of that?
I would, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and um, this issue uh addresses um. At least to some, a, a somewhat alarming trend, uh, that the Planning Commission has considered in two public hearings and several workshops. And that is the uh non-retail traffic generating storage facilities. That are allowed in this, through the special permit process. In the two retail-focused commercial zoning districts in, under our zoning code, both the C-one and the CR zoning districts. Uh, currently, mini storage facilities are allowed through a special permit process, a conditional use permit process. That's considered and approved by our hearing examiner system. Uh, however, the factors that the hearing examiner uses. For approval or denial of these applications do not directly address the retail compatibility. So to speak, of the storage facilities. Um, after, after quite a bit of consideration, much discussion, the Planning Commission has recommended that the uses. Uh, that the special use permit option be stricken from the C-one and CR zoning dis- districts. And that minis- mini storage facilities only be allowed in the industrial and the C-three zoning districts. As a outright permitted use. Um, Mr. Maloney has requested um, a map that have been added to the agenda item a, a little bit. Later in the afternoon today, first of those shows where mini storage facilities would be allowed. Under the proposed amendment, it's in the uh mono-colored, the purplish lavender-ish uh colored map. And then the second map is a multi-colored map that shows both the uh I-one and C-three zoning districts. In addition to the C-one and C-three zoning district distribution throughout the city. Um, again, um, the uh Planning Commission uh considered two options for this. Essentially to uh stricken them um completely from the special permit process. In the C-one, the kind of zoning that takes place along Road sixty-eight and Core Street, for example. And the C-thr- and the CR zoning districts, that zoning district uh roughly focused on the Road one hundred area. Um, they also considered options for uh addressing um limitations. That would apply in both instances, however, they chose not to make that recommendation to council. Um, simply because it didn't seem appropriate or applicable or practical. For the kind of scale of the uh C-one or the mini storage facilities that we are experiencing applications for. Um, I hope that explains it uh a little in more detail for council's consideration and um. Certainly welcome the opportunity to address questions that council may have.
Thank you, thank you, Director White, any questions or comments from, uh, yes, Councilmember Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. White, for the presentation and thank you for putting those maps together, I was trying to do that in some sort of um version on my iPad and I was. Um, not successful, so that really helps me, um, so I do have a que- do have a question. Um, in the new comp plan that we're looking at adopting, we're creating three new zones over in the Broadmoor area. Um, would they be allowed in any of, would storage units be allowed in any of those three zones?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, uh, in my way of thinking currently, and again, these districts have not been fully fleshed out and developed yet. These districts have not been fully fleshed out and developed yet. My my thinking is that they would not be based on council's goals for the Broadmoor area. Walkability, um, trails, uh, an intermix of mixed uses, uh, retail, commercial. Public, um. I can't say for sure, of course, because we're not there yet, but in in my way of thinking at this time, my guess is they would not be.
Right, I I guess I I appreciate the thought as to how we'd like Broadmoor to develop and how um, a. How many storage units could be uh, conflicting with that goal, but I also um. Am concerned about the perception and reality that this would only be allowed in the eastern part of our city. Um, and so I'd want to make sure that we were very thoughtful as to where. These units would go and what they mean and how they would drive development or redevelopment in our community. So um, I I I hope we'll be very thoughtful when we're crafting those as to um, disparate impacts across geographically across our city. Um, but in general, I'm supportive of this, um, I don't. I, if we can remove something from a um, special use permit and make it more certain, that will allow businesses to um. To be able to respond more clearly and be able to, with the less interpretation of our code, and I think that's always positive. Um, and in general, what we've seen is that this is, this can be. Counter purposes to our ideal uh, idea of, you know, of retail centers and retail spaces, um. Storage units just, they 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 don't, they don't provide that 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 traffic that drives that that grows businesses instead. It, um, they're, while they're, while they're useful and and a lot of people take advantage of their services, I think make sure that they're they're strategically placed is, it makes a lot of sense, so I'm. I'm supportive of this, but um, and in the future, I hope we we have a robust thought process about where, what we're, what will be allowed in Broadmoor and. And the, and everywhere in the western part of Pasco as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Sherrano.
Thank you, and thank you for those thoughts, Councilman Maloney. Um, you know, I'm gonna take it slightly differently. Rather than striking this all together, it seems like a reasonable way to split the baby and. Maybe that's part of the conversation that I'm not able to read into the Planning Commission is, you know. Allow these things upon a fi- making a finding, the land use hearing examiner, making a finding of consistency with the existing retail. Infrastructure or the planned retail infrastructure. It seems. The outright prohibition through a special use permit seems pretty, you know, to Councilman Maloney's point, you're pigeonholing it into one spot of the. Of the city, and I'm not suggesting that Broadmoor should develop all um. Mini storage, but to to, and and again, to your point, Mr. White, we don't know what that looks like, so. I I just think there's, there's possibly a way to uh, provide the hearing examiner with some kind of express language to. Make an allowance. Um. You know, upon a consistency finding with uh, other permitted retail uses. Um, and I don't know exactly how that looks, you know, seeing this and not having been privy to all the conversations outside of the record. Um, so that's, that's my thought, and maybe that's too burdensome, and maybe it uh, lends itself to pretty arbitrary, but again, I think. You know, uh, staff, maybe staff and council can come back and and have some, you know, specific. Uh, kind of targeted thoughts. I- i- if if that's something that the rest of council is open to, um. That's my thought, rather than outright prohibiting it, finding a way to allow it. Insofar as it's con- insofar as it is consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherrano. Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate both uh, uh, my colleagues' uh, observation, I I I think there's certainly a uh. It need to be thoughtful about where. Are we are allowing certain businesses, I, you know, going through downtown, uh, you know, actions of uh, previous councils perhaps. Or what, for whatever reason have allowed uh, businesses in downtown that really. Have no business being downtown and not to uh, put anyone out, but I I think that there's, there's definitely a uh. Um, being able to have um, some, some teeth to our development, um. And in our, the the desired development, that our residents want to see, the 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 roads that people wanna. Uh, walk in and the neighborhoods that we want to build, there's certainly um, just a lot of thought needs to be, needs to be given to this, so I see this as a step in that direction. Um, I do see just visually, it it, you know, if somebody was to look at this map, it it does um. Seem like there's some inequity there, and so I think that even just that perception, just by looking at a map. Um, can be there even just from someone just looking at it like that, so I think that 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 should be something that. Um, at the very least, looking at where newer development will be going is and and um, where we want to really build out some. Neighborhood, commercial, um, nodes, I think that that'd be really important to to really think about, um, you know. Perhaps how how we are wanting to um, roll this out instead of just a kind of a blanket thing, so. Uh, I I I see, I see the. The ability for someone to be able to, um, uh, I guess. Go through the motions and br- find loopholes that I'm not necessarily sure that, you know. Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that it'd be really good to make sure that we ha- we have something that has teeth and that we can enforce. And that it is appropriate, um, so I, that's those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, Rick White again, um, those are issues that the Planning Commission did discuss and. Uh. In 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 way of explanation, uh, this, the conditional use, the special permit process does have a number of. Factors for the hearing examiner to consider. What they are focused on though is. Um, the uh, creation of no less of an impact than the permitted uses in the area. And frankly, mini storage facilities. Almost have no impact on um, adjacent property uses. Uh, they generate very little traffic. Uh, they generate zero to maybe one noise complaint or or some other kind of complaint. Per year, and um, it it presented the commission with a bit of a conundrum. Um, and uh, they ended up weighing heavily on the side of. The activity level necessary for generating a strong retail focused and oriented commercial district. Um, and I do recognize that the, that the map with the monocolored, the lavender purplish, uh, obviously. Um. Indicates uh, um, focus on the east side of Pasco. Unfortunately, that's where all the industrial and commercial C three, the uh, commercial general zoning district is located. Um, getting back towards Mr. Maloney's comments earlier. There may in fact be an opportunity for addressing this issue in Broadmoor, for example. By returning to the commission's discussion about scale. And perhaps uh, size of the facilities. I I'm not sure about what the appropriate uh, measures would be, but um. Perhaps with a little bit more thought, recognizing, let let's continue to use Broadmoor as an example. There may be some opportunities for, um. Perhaps focused mini storage facilities, maybe in conjunction with um, multifamily uses on a parcel or. A difficult to develop sites because in this case, the uh. Existing gravel pit operations, there might be an opportunity to maybe. Think pretty well outside the box, but um, at least uh, give that some thought. Uh, during the uh, latter stages of the development of the Broadmoor Master Plan. Uh, just, so just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. White, for those additional comments. Um, I want to get back to something you said there just to make sure I fully understand it. Um, so I think what you said regarding the Planning Commission's consideration about the impact of a storage unit. Is that it doesn't have a negative impact. But what the Planning Commission weighed was that it doesn't have a amplifying positive impact. That another retail business, next to a retail business and so on, that those create by creating that synergy of a pocket of commercial that. Someone would want to visit all the different locations instead of just a storage unit which they. Does not have a lot of traffic, does not have a lot of visits, and does not necessarily drive retail um, purchases. Is that? Is that a different way of saying what you were saying? Am I capturing that right?
No, yeah, no, you are, we have that, the commission had that exact discussion, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Sherrano.
Sorry, it feels like we're playing some tennis here, almost, uh, but uh, Mr. White, I think. Where my concern lies is I I appreciate the forethought of the planning document and the zoning that's gonna be forthcoming, but if we strike this out as an option. Then we have to zone a specific way. We do not have this alternative of a special use permit. So by striking it now, uh, I feel like we're jumping a little bit early. Uh, that said, maybe you have two dozen of these on your desk and. You know, now's the time to approach it. I I don't know, I'm not gonna pretend to be in your position. That said, I have, uh, I will express concern and reservation about um, saying that. We can really only address this one way, which would be through a zoning ordinance or zoning of a a future planned development. Uh, and striking this out unless there's, I guess in my perspective, unless there's need to strike this now. I see no need to strike this now.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherrano. And I'll, I will give my two cents, uh, as as I was reading this, I I kind of. I I just didn't want to eliminate the uh, the special permit processes. But I I appreciate both of your uh, comments because in the inequity that can come in this. In my perfect world, and I'll give you an example, on Burton Avenue, there is a mini storage uh, facility. But the mini storage facility is on the backside near the residential. But what's on the main strip of Burton are all retail businesses, and that's ideal. Uh, it it concerns me to eliminate the special permit process because. Um, I was hoping that it could be considered to put these mini storages in those areas. On the backside of this zoning type, because we're very limited with the amount of retail space we have and and this type of zoning in the city of Pasco. I think about this area in East Pasco, I'd hate to see a community. Get filled with mini storages where it could someday be retail and be more vibrant and allow them to have. Uh, more amenities near their home. So I I, in my thought, I was thinking, and I don't know how this is even possible, Director White, but. And and I think the only way is to to continue with the special permit is to allow those. Uh, mini storages on the back end where it's not right on the main, uh. The main commercial retail areas, such as it is in Burton. I think the one on Burton is perfect. It's in between the homes and 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 the main street of Burton, and I don't even know if that's possible. But eliminating the special permit use concerns me because I was hoping that in during that process. That the uh, land, the land surveyor would consider that, but it sounds like that's not the case. Is that correct, Director White?
Well, um, without standards to guide. The percentage of retail in relation to the uh, entire parcel. Um, the hearing examiner will not substitute their judgment for what might be local intent. Um, the Planning Commission did discuss that, uh, actually at length, and they recommended. Um. Simply, they 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 recommended uh, the the path forward that you have before you this evening, um. Again, uh, those can be looked, those can be relooked at, perhaps ideally. What we, what would be um, better for council's consideration would be to return this to a workshop meeting. Outlining several of the options for what you just expressed, Mr. Mayor, uh, for council's consideration.
Well, that that would be the the way I would suggest going, uh, not that I want to delay this any longer, but. I I'm very reluctant to eliminate the special permit process. I would like to have the special permit process. With the uh, with with those things that I had uh, mentioned earlier because. Again, I don't want to take. And and considering the inequity part of it, I don't want to take the opportunity for a place in the eastern uh, East Pasco side. That could someday be a retail place, but if we were to allow them in the. In the portion that's not so busy, uh, that that would be most appropriate for me, so. That would be the suggestion I would have, what you just suggested, uh, Director White. I don't know how the council feels about that.
I'm with you.
Okay. So, can we go, can we do that, uh, uh, Mr. uh, Councilmember Maloney, are you okay with that? Good, okay. So can we go that, that direction at this time, Director White?
Yes, certainly. We'll, we'll um, we'll outline those reasons and the options that the Planning Commission considered and go from there.
Alright, thank you, Director White, I appreciate it. Uh, one more comment, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. White, if there's any um, particularly salient um, parts of the Planning Commission um, discussion that you could. Highlight to us, I I did certainly did not listen to the whole Planning Commission meetings, but I certainly want to. To weigh the fact that they, they're, they're, you know, appointed by us and they're a thoughtful uh, committee. If there's some excerpts that would be useful for us to listen to, you know, maybe two or three minutes of of excerpt as opposed to the whole meeting. Um, I really appreciate just hearing some of their dialogue and conversation, so if you can point us to maybe, um, you know, again, a shortened. Uh, piece of of what would be particularly exciting for this conversation, that would help me get informed as to what they considered and what they did not, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Thank you for that, uh, Director White. We'll move on to the next item is uh, the budget adj- adjustment for Grimway wastewater connection to Columbia East Lift Station. And the P W R F. Director Warley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, thank you.
Great, well, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of council. Uh, council may recall this particular item, uh, staff presented this item back in April. It had to do with the connection of Grimway to the Columbia East Lift Station. To help complete that Columbia East Lift Station and Force Main project. You may recall that we brought this to council at a time when there was, we identified a, an error in the bid. And we had a discussion about how to deal with it. We decided to postpone this item. Um, and then this item also included a budget amendment. Um, and so we ended up dealing with the bid error. Uh, by the fact that the bidder was able to give us a credit for the double counting of the price of an item within the bid. And due to that, uh, it allowed the, under the authorization council had given to the city manager. Uh, we awarded it to the contractor. Uh, and part of the reason that we did that so quickly is because we have a timeliness issue with this project. We are very much trying to get the Force Main project and Grimway connected to this pipe system as soon as possible. They start their season up in early July, and there is a long lead item. On a special manhole that is required for this connection. It's a flow meter manhole. And that's a long lead item, we wanted to get it ordered. So, we went ahead and did that, and so what's remaining is the budget amendment part of that effort. And that is to uh, a- amend the budget to include this connection project. During all of this, we also realized that there is a second connection, and that's at the other end of the project. Now, there's a map in your agenda packet on this item, and I don't know if we can pull that up on the screen or not. But you can see the extent of the project. Where we show the Force Main coming all the way from the Columbia East Lift Station, all the way up to the process water reuse facility. And the contract we awarded and brought to council before is the south end of the project. And then the other end of the project is to take the flow from Grimway and redirect it directly to one of the uh. Storage ponds at the reuse facility and bypass the screening building. Uh, this is, uh. This, we are able to do this because the flow coming from Grimway is cleaner than the other processors. And the reason it is, is because they have an equalization pond on their site that their flow goes through before it goes into our pump station. So we don't have to put their flows through the screens building. And so this will make it much more efficient. And so, we're adding this item to the budget agenda, uh, amendment, I mean. And we are requesting approval from council to amend the budget. To add these two small items that will complete the Columbia East Lift Station and Force Main project. And we are proposing to have this, uh, these two items funded through the Economic Development Fund. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this project.
Thank you, Director Warley. It's always good to have an adjustment downward. Any any questions or comments from council? We're looking forward to see it at the, the next uh, meeting, uh, City Council meeting. So thank you for that, Director Warley, and then we'll move right along into the next item for the professional services agreement. With Mary Smith, uh, for design services for the wastewater treatment plant, improvement phase two.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, on this particular item, this is the second phase. Of the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. And for this particular item, I am going to turn it over to our CIP manager, Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mrs. Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are bringing to you for discussion a professional services agreement with Mary Smith. Mary Smith is the consultant that designed the first phase of the improvements at our wastewater treatment plant, which. You may remember, we just awarded and construction is about to start. Um, they were selected to perform the design of both phases, one and two, as established in our facility plan for this facility. Uh, phase one was completed successfully and in a timely manner. Uh, therefore we now have scope for phase two as a separate PSA. Um, this PSA is for a total amount of two million, two hundred thousand dollars and I'm rounding. Um, it is for design services, which include not only the actual design, which is. Uh, plan specifications and cost estimates, but also the permitting and bid support. In this case, the permitting is going to be exhausted because, uh, it includes, um, the scope of the project includes water, work. Work in water. We are, um, completing the outfall replacement and upside and we are building a new diffuser. Um, along with that, there are other improvements at the facility itself, dealing with the solids. Um, as part of the de-watering and thickening and also UV disinfection of our, um. Out, outfall, out, outflow, sorry. Um. There are a couple of tasks that you may have seen in the, in the agreement that are. Included, but they're only to be performed based on an approval from the city and those includes. Uh, some funding application support, which, uh, it is anticipated that the city will be applying for ecology loan. Uh, funding in twenty twenty-two, late twenty twenty-two. And this application is pretty involved. Last year we were able to perform it with minimal support from our consultant. For this phase, we will see, um, how much support do we need? Um, evaluations for some specific processes that we don't know yet if we will need as part of this, um. Design, but yet we wanted to include it because it is likely that they would be needed in a, in a. Quick turnaround to decide what equipment and what type of process are we moving forward with. And then finally, the right away an Eastman acquisition, if it were needed, we would have to evaluate what type of Eastmans and. What the location and size of those Eastmans that are existing, especially once we get near the shore. Um, which is really the only portion that would be necessary where we're dealing with state agencies and, and other agencies. So there we would have to evaluate whether there's an update to the existing Eastman or any change or a brand new Eastman, um, abandoning the previous one. Um, with all that, I think I've covered all, all the scope of work that we have with our consultant and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate your report tonight. Any questions from council? It doesn't look like it. So thank you for that report and, uh, we'll be looking for that at the next council meeting. Oh. City Manager Dave Zabel, did you have?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that. And we'll, we have three items left. We've been at this for an hour and a half. Does council want to keep going or do you want a ten minute break? Keep going? All right, we'll keep going. So with that, next on the agenda. Is a resolution against bias-based hate. Uh, City Manager Zabel.
Uh, thank you and good evening again, Mayor and Council. So at your, uh, May seventh, uh, meeting, you discussed the. Draft resolution that we, uh, have included in the packet. Uh, and it, as I had mentioned previously, that was the, you know, product of, uh, community input as well as, uh. Councilmember Roach's efforts and I, and I did send council, uh, uh, uh. Heard some of her early work that's been a primary source document for, for this document, uh. Uh, in a separate email as well as input from IDEC and others and, uh. We brought that to you at your May seventh meeting. Council had, I think, some good discussion on that, uh. And, uh, provided several comments, uh, that, uh, and direction to staff that we were able to. Modify the resolution and try to capture that conversation. So the version you have before you tonight. Uh, we've done our best to try to. Try to get, uh, uh, in writing, uh, council's comments as well as. Uh, the other council direction was to run this by, uh, city legal. And so, uh, we did have an opportunity to talk to city attorney's office about it as well and I. I have, uh, if I could quickly go through the. Uh, the resolution, I can kind of identify for you some of the changes we made based on, uh, council's discussion and legal review. So. I think, uh, in the title, uh, we did make a change there, uh, striking. And residents primarily not, not because our residents. Uh, have a, aren't, aren't interested in standing up to hate. It's just that we really can't make a resolution. Resolving what our residents are going to do. So that was a, that was a good catch from legal. This is really a resolution about. Uh, what the council's going to do. Um, we have a couple of, uh, one little typo in the first whereas it's, uh, pretty inconsequential. Um, in the, uh, one of the whereas is down there. Uh, a bit further where we have a significant, uh, uh, piece and that's, uh. Councilmember, uh, Alvarado had mentioned, uh, we, our history piece could do a little more work and I, I talked to. Councilmember Alvarado last week, uh, late last week and was able to get his thoughts on that and, uh. I didn't get a chance to kind of go over this with you, my apologies, but, uh, it seemed like our, our first incidences and that goes back to the history of Pasco. And it's not necessarily the city or city government, but it is something that did happen in Pasco. Uh, and that had to do with Chinese rail workers, uh, being segregated as to where they could live. And that's, that's a fact of our history. And, uh, you know, that's, that's something we have an opportunity to acknowledge here. I mean, it dates back. Obviously a hundred and forty plus years ago, but, uh. Uh, it i- it is a piece of our history and, uh, and so we, I, I, I. Added that to, to kind of provide a little bit of context, uh, along those lines. And then down into the, um. Things that the council's resolving. Um. Section one, and we can certainly talk about it. Uh, initially it said, uh, declaration of the city council, city council does not tolerate and denounces hate. Uh, after, after consultation with the city attorney. That does not tolerate kind of leaves you in a position to. So what are you going to do about it? Are you going to pass ordinances not tolerating it? What can you pass an ordinance by law saying what you tolerate and what you don't law? Tolerate. It's, it's, it's more of a. I guess that, and I'll, if you want to ask Eric about it, it, it's more of a. Punitive thing, I guess, than what we're really trying to do here is denounce hate. And so, you know, we, we obviously retain the denouncing because that's really what this resolution's about. And, uh, and that's the action the council takes through a resolution. Um. Little further down in section five, uh. We had done some incorporation. Uh, there was an issue you recall from, uh, Councilmember Serrano about using the word assuring. And in looking at that, uh, you know, there were, there were some issues about, uh, recruitment and retention. Uh, up in the first bullet. And, um, so we, we took the liberty to try to, we moved, uh. Diverse applicant pool in terms of meaning attracting, uh, diverse workforce. Uh, and appointments of boards and cities together, feeling like that's kind of the recruitment piece to, to bring people. Uh, to the table for the city and, uh. Assuring, again, that's, that's kind of a legalistic term. Where you, you really kind of have to do something to assure something where, and it's not that you aren't doing something, but. This is really more about this is our practice is going to be to do this. We can't really. Pass a law saying who we're going to hire and who we're not going to hire. We can pass, but we can pass a resolution saying. Uh, we're going to make efforts to make sure we, we have a great pool of candidates to choose from that's diverse and represents our community. And a little bit further down, uh, we had a, um. Item about, uh, zoning practices and, uh. It kind of goes into the original version, uh, talked about exclusionary zoning practices. And we may or may not have exclusionary zoning practices. Don't really know. It kind of draws a conclusion. And, uh, I think what the underlying effort here is really more to, to, uh. Continue enhancing our zoning practices. Uh, in a way that increases housing opportunities and they do not disproportionately negatively impact. People of color and low income communities. So that's, that was more of a legalistic, uh, uh, revision. On that piece, uh, because as I mentioned before. Noting exclusionary zoning practices is a conclusion that we, that we have them. We may or may not. We did not do an analysis of that. So. Uh, similarly worked with the county, uh. Prosecutor, uh, we modified that, continue to work with. In the way we have. So we're not necessarily defining work except that we, it's, it's a priority for us and, uh. Uh, the city would actively, uh, work with the prosecutor and continue to prosecute. Uh, hate crimes. And then the final, uh. Bullet, excuse me, the final bullet, uh, strive and partner with. And support organizations and individuals endorse and fund. We took out, because it's probably not the necessarily council's. Proper role. You're going to find yourself being asked to endorse, endorse some age organizations and. Other, other organizations may be asking you why you're not endorsing them and you, you probably don't want to be in that position. So. So though that pretty much captures, uh, the major changes. And then I note that we did get two, uh. Uh, community members weigh in, uh, earlier today and I, I think, uh, city clerk sent that to you. Dr., uh, Paulo, uh, De Vera had sent, uh, comments to council. Uh, through our, our website and then earlier tonight I'd forwarded the email to council from. Uh, Ms. Kim Lerman. Uh, recall that Kim was one of our initial contacts, uh, in this entire discussion. So. And, uh, that's, that's available to you in your email for review.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. Um, any questions or comments from the council on this topic? You like it? Uh, Councilmember Roach, did you have a comment?
Hi there, Mayor. Um, no, I had read through the comments, uh, from the couple. Residents that, that weighed in and just appreciate that. Background that Mr. Zabel just gave. Um, there's clearly been so much work put into this. Um, and I appreciate that and the talk to this. Sorry about the kids in the background. Um. Yeah, the. The time, the effort that Sappos put into this, um, I do. I'm all good with the, the down, denouncing versus tolerate. Um, I just recall, you know, one of the conversations I had with, um. Another Asian American Pasco resident was about the, you know, the public awareness piece of it and inclusion of that about. You know, what is a race-based, uh, hate crime? You know, how do you report one? Um, and how would that be handled by the city? And so that's, um, information that. I think is something actionable the city could, could do. Okay. Um, I think that's all of that. Sorry, getting derailed here and getting distracted.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Uh, and City Manager David, thank you for mentioning the two comments from, uh, the community members that, uh. I just got the, I, I read the first one and just read the second one. So we'll consider those as well, um, when we go to. Bring this for approval. So thank you for, uh, Councilmember Serrano.
You have the beer, Alvarado, it doesn't matter.
Go, oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, you know, I'll say I'm still struggling with this one. Um, a handful of reasons. I mean, in particular, we start off with denouncing hate. And then in section five, we talk about our land use and zoning practices. Uh, while that may have a corollary effect, I, I feel like we're kind of all over the place. Um. You know, if we're going to take a resolution in a stance like this, it seems like we should kind of drill down on the central issue and stay focused there. So I struggled with that. Um. You know, so those are bullet points. I don't know. It's like sub bullet points, one and two and of, of subsection five. And, and I think the overall concern that I have too is, you know, I think back to, I believe it was our last, uh, not. Last meeting, but I think two, two business meetings ago, we had a gentleman who wanted us to denounce, um, Planned Parenthood. And at what point do we determine, um. To a degree, which segment of our population we want to represent through proclamations? Um, these issues, we need to take a stance, no question about. We don't want to tolerate, um. These hate-based crimes. There's no question about that. But I, I just, I, I struggle with as we take some of these. Issues we're, we're veering into, uh, picking and choosing where we're going to stand up and make a statement. Um. And again, I mean, what, what's going to stop the next week from receiving an ordinance from again, that, that same gentleman saying you guys need to denounce. Planned Parenthood. Here's my resolution. And then at what point do we, we draw the line? And I guess that's, that's my concern here is that, you know, we, we referenced two resolutions, thirty-eight sixty and thirty-nine sixty-eight. Both of which, one created the inclusivity commission. And one addressed, um, you know, primarily after the George Floyd incident, um, the rights for people to, uh, continually. Have their freedom to speak. Uh, recognizing those aren't exactly on par with this. I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that we're kind of. Veering outside of our traditional lane, which is to, you know, I understand we need to stand for our citizens and residents, but at the same time. You know, our primary focus is making sure that the infrastructure is there, that the budget's there. Uh, that staff's working to provide, you know, those types of things. Um, so. I, I'm just, I'm still struggling with this one. It seems, you know, we've also had a proclamation, um, on AAPI hate, uh, in the recent past. And again. One of the other main concerns, I, I reiterate where I started, we start from one point of, uh, addressing. Race-based hate and then get into our land use and zoning practices and, um. I, I, I just, I, quite frankly, I just cannot support this as it's written.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I appreciate, uh, um, the comments today. I. Uh, and I do appreciate the phone call with, uh, Mr. Sable about, you know, just adding a little bit more language about. Um, you know, some of the, some of our history. I mean, if we really dig down into the history. Um, you know, there, there's, we, we, we don't have the best, uh, track record. I think a lot of our cities don't, just in, uh. Practices of redlining, uh, practices of exclusion. It's, it's very, it's pretty clear. It's not, you know. History that's, uh, um, I guess as hidden. Uh, I think most folks, if, you know. You have any kind of, uh, 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 awareness, you'd be able to, uh, figure, figure some of these things out. But, but I, I really appreciate seeing that here. I mean, I think, uh, obviously we are not going to. Be able to address everything in one resolution, but, but I, I do see the, um. Being able to look even our, our own history as a city, uh, is important, I think, um. And so obviously there, there, there could be a volumes of books about our history. And so I, I just, I do appreciate seeing that here. And I think part of that, I mean, some of those histories are what created some of these, um, disparities and land uses and things of that. And so I, I, I don't, I'm not. Uh, also convinced that those need, that needs to be here per, per se. But there is a, a reason why we have an East Pasco and there's a reason why we have industrial areas, uh, with, uh, residential. Uh, and all those things are true. Um, and so I guess I, I don't necessarily know that we're going to fix all that with this resolution, but I appreciate the fact that we are trying. Uh, and, um, I think from a perspective of actionable items, one of the things I thought about and I don't know if this is the best way, but. What I do know is that folks have a, um, hard time reporting. Uh, they, they don't feel safe. They don't feel like it's a. Uh, you know, how do I report this? Uh, you know, I, I just experienced this thing that, you know. This hate crime or whatever. And perhaps folks don't know how to report those things. And so I'm wondering, um, if. One of the things I've, I've been using quite a bit is Ask Pasco, probably to staff's dismay of how much I use. one of the things I've, I've been using quite a bit is Ask Pasco, probably to staffs this may of how much I use this app. It's a pretty, pretty, it's given me some superpowers, I feel, I feel like. And so I, I think the more folks are able to use things, technology, or even just ways to know that they have access to their government to be able to you know, to say, hey, I can, and Ask Pasco, I can, you know, send this message to the police department and they can come help me investigate this thing in, in a way that I feel safe, you know, way that I, and my neighbors are not gonna, you know, know that I'm riding on them or whatever. I, I think that there's some conversation around that. I think that would be very salient to this as far as how people report and how people feel comfortable and feel like they have access to report. Whether it be a hate crime or any, any, anything like that. I know that in certain parts of our community, the numbers are great and it may be because we are in a very safe community, but also maybe that, maybe that people don't feel safe contacting the police department or may feel like they don't know how. And so I think that, to me, seems pretty salient to this part of the conversation. And those are my comments.
Thank you, council member Alvarado. Anyone else? Council member Milley.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify from what I've read as far as the history of Pasco, actually Pasco in its history actually has been very welcoming and open. It was, you could talk about World War Two, like the African-American community was actually very welcomed in Pasco where the other cities it wasn't. So to say that I'm ashamed of history, I actually am not. I'm actually proud of this history of Pasco that we were welcoming to people that were different than what the community was originally. So I just think we gotta look at everything before we start slamming our, our history that I think we actually do have a, a good history. We have been welcoming. Is it perfect? No. But I believe in the good of humanity and I believe in the good of Pasco residents. I mean, we all overall get along pretty well, so. And again, I, I kind of go on some of what Mr. Serrano said that I mean, we, you don't want to open up the door, but I'll, I'll pray about it and we'll see what this leads.
Thank you, council member Milley. Mayor Protem Brajas.
Thank you, mayor. I feel that this document just makes acknowledgement that yes, historically, even though we have been inclusive in the past, there's still areas that still need work. There's still disparities. There's still division. And the document acknowledges that although we do, we did have this history, it continues in, in some ways. And people that are affected by it are the ones that see it and feel it and live it. Unfortunately, that's the way it's been. And so with this document acknowledging the disparities, like I said, that council member Alvarado brought up. It's, it's not to throw dirt per se on, on Pasco, on the history. It's to acknowledge, it's to help heal that wound and help, you know, break down those barriers to where there's lack of communication for people to approach our police department to make a report. Granted, you know, it, we are a welcoming city now. But we still need to work on it. We still need to improve our, our communication. We still need to improve our relationships. We are a, a growing city. We are making changes, positive changes. But we still need a little bit of help. And so by addressing it on this document, it, it gives people that peace of mind. It acknowledges what we've been through and it acknowledges that we are working on it and as a city that we are open to fix it, to work on. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brajas. Council member Maloney.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief because I think there's been a lot of thoughts shared, very heartfelt thoughts and I, I really appreciate that. So I don't wanna I want to do more than say that I've started to learn a lot more about Franklin County's history. I'm spending, I, you know, spend some time talking with the, the current executive director of the Franklin County. And when we talk about some of the historical elements that have existed, like I think, well, I learned recently what, what it means to be on the other side of the tracks. Why is there another side of the tracks? And that was something that, that was brought to my attention recently and it's the prevailing wind. It's where the smoke came from the trains. And so that was a bad neighborhood. And so when we talk about East Pasco and the east side of the railroad tracks, that, that's a real thing and that is a zoning thing. That is a district thing. That was a, that was a community planning element that put the poorest and most disadvantaged people in the most, in the cheapest property, which was actually negatively affects their health com, outcomes. So when we talk about the history of the community and understanding what that means, there's, there's a lot of elements to it that I think are above and beyond what we think of as just, you know, the, the base level of racism of, you know, calling someone a slur. And so I, I think when we, when we talk about these things and think about these things, I don't see anything here. And I, I read, read it again, Mr. Milner, after you brought it to you on the slamming of Pasco. I was trying to see where you were coming from and maybe I just, I'm just not seeing it in the same light, but I think acknowledging what the community has been through a little bit, I didn't feel like was slamming it so much as acknowledging that it's, it's, there's, there's things that were accepted then that certainly aren't accepted now. And just simply acknowledging that that exists and it has some disparate effects even today. And we can still see in our minority communities even, you know, as we're talking about mini storage and where, where it'd be permitted in the city. You can still see that impact and what that looks like in the city even exists in just what we were talking about today and what was recommended from the planning commission. So I think bringing those things to light and just having that conversation helps. And I, I don't see anything in here that, that made me feel like I should feel attacked as a, as a, as a very proud Pasco citizen and community member. So I appreciate the healthy dialogue. I think it's really good to have this conversation and I really appreciate everyone's thoughts, so. Thank you. Longer than I meant to. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so I'll, I'll, I wanna terminate this, this discussion with, with this. It is very interesting for me to hear your heartfelt discussions and, and your thoughts. And it's all about perspective because, you know, most of us sitting on this council today, none of us lived through what actually happened. But we're trying to fix it. We're trying to bring it to light. We're trying to make this a better place. And that's why people have elected you guys to sit on this council so that you can determine and represent the community on where do you draw that line. So I respect each and every one of your comments. And it's important and this is what it's all about. And so in listening to all your discussions and, and trying to do the best for our community, obviously, every one of your points are valid. I, I, I just, I just envisioned in my mind that, you know, people, if they were, that actually lived through it, would be looking at us, you know, how they would be looking at us having this discussion today. Because I'm sure every one of us is right in our own minds and it's all perspective. For me, as I listened to you guys have this discussion in the last meeting, I, I was absent. It was, you know, how, how do we take care of our community? But just as important as city manager Dave Abel explained the changes that were made, we also gotta make sure that it is written in a way that's gonna protect us as a city and make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation where where it might affect us in a negative way. Because all this is supposed to be positive. And so I don't see, personally, I don't see anything written in a way, and I think the changes were made to allow us to hopefully make anybody coming into our city and anybody living in our city feel safe and feel as equal as anybody else in the city. So I, you know, so I'm okay with it. I'm I'm, I'm happy we're having this discussion and, you know, it's important. This line that you guys are drawing and the way you're explaining it. Again, it's, it's a reason why the community has you here and I'm proud of everybody and I'm proud of us for, for, you know, bringing up these topics and it's not easy being here and making these decisions. We're making it all the way from zoning to, to making our citizens feel safe and making the city a better place for our future generations. So thank you very much for that. You know, with that, city manager Abel will bring it on and respect everybody's decision on, on the vote when, when it comes for approval.
Okay, we'll bring it in next week.
Or you mean June seventh?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank, thank you very, uh, thank you very much again, council. Appreciate, appreciate what you guys do. So next we'll go to item I and that's the amendment number two to Metro Drug Task Force Interlocal Agreement. Chief Ken Roski, are you on the line or are we gonna?
I will.
Oh, okay.
I will handle that. Mayor, council. This resolution is amendment number two to the drug, Metro Drug Task Force Interlocal Agreement. That agreement is between the city of Pasco, Kennewick, Richland, West Richland and the counties of Benton and Franklin. In two thousand eighteen, grant funding through the Burns Jag Grant became inconsistent. It was late that year. And the funds since that time have not been coming in. That inconsistency, this amendment will address those funding shortfalls. So the, the the dates, this will pick up in January of twenty-one and will take us through twenty twenty-four. The Metro Drug Task Force has been in existence for about thirty-four years and addresses trafficking within our communities. The, the funding is needed to pick up where the grant money has dropped off. Both Benton and Franklin Counties pay a hundred percent of the administrative assistant for that task force. Each participating agency will commit to paying eighteen point one eight percent of any shortfall that happens. The city of West Richland is, will obligate to nine point one zero percent. If those grant funds were to come available, they would offset the, any cost that did come to us. And with that, do you have any questions about?
Thank you for that, Chief Cook. Council member Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. And thank you for, for both keeping it brief. I know it's getting late, so I will, I'll keep mine equally brief. Support this, no, no problem with this at all, but I would be very interested in understanding how the new state of drug laws are going to impact how we enforce and what the work of the, of the Metro Drug Task Force will be. I'm not asking for that right now, but if we could have it at some workshop, is that planned, Mr. Sable, if it comes soon?
Yeah, we could do a, we could do a session on Metro Drug Task Force partnership and maybe bi pen. We could pick them up both that night just so you could know a little bit more about those regional agreements we have with our partners out there. I, I will just quickly say it might have the potential of impacting some sources of information, but in terms of the bus and, and the target of this org, of this the drug task force, they're, they're after a much bigger fish than the individual user. So they're, they're looking at, you know, massive drug deals and and, you know, the things that are moving through this community that we want to shut down as quickly as possible. So then that, the new drug laws really didn't impact those types of criminals.
Right, so this is focused on trafficking specifically?